Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Baker. Counselor Siomo. Counselor Conley. Counselor Consalvo.
Present.
Counselor Jackson.
Present.
Counselor Lamatina.
Here.
Counselor Linehan.
Here.
Counselor Murphy.
Here.
Counselor O'Malley.
Present.
Counselor Presley. Counselor Ross. And Counselor Yancy.
I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. Please note that we've been joined by Counselor Conley since the roll call. I have the honor of introducing my friend and colleague, City Counselor Bill Linehan, who will introduce Father Brian Cullinan from St. Anthony's Shrine to deliver today's invocation. After Father Cullinan delivers today's invocation, I would ask all to remain standing as Counselor Linehan will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ask all counselors and all guests to please rise at this time. Counselor Bill Linehan.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is my honor and I just happened to meet Father Brian Cullinan, who is going to open our proceedings here today with the invocation. Father Brian Cullinan is at St. Anthony's Shrine on Arch Street, and he's a Franciscan, and he has served in the Franciscan parishes of New Jersey. He was a pastor for 19 years and an assistant pastor for 12. He was ordained as a priest in Washington, D.C. in 1971. His dad is a first-generation Irish, and his mom is from County Cary. And there's 32 counties, and that's where my people are from also, so I think we're cousins, you know? The family comes from a place called Castle Island, ironically, in County Cary. And Father Brian's been involved in numerous activities, and he's traveled widely. He loves photography, and he's a lover of sports. We talked about the Bruins and the Red Sox as we walked down from the office. He has a master's degree in theology, and he has skills in radio and television production. This is interesting. Many of you will not remember the show, but while he was in L.A. serving, he was a technical advisor for an episode of Gunsmoke. Sal, you remember that? Charles? And of course, I remember it. He came to St. Anthony's Shrine in July of 2011. It's my honor to introduce Father Brian Cullinan.
Put us power heads for a moment of prayer. Lord, we gather on this beautiful Wednesday afternoon in June, and we are all enjoying this break from the hot and humid days of last week. Lord, we ask you to be with each of us today. We are men and women of different faiths, different creeds, and different backgrounds. We gather as people of different political views, and all of this works to make a special mix of thoughts, ideas, and dreams. We ask your blessings upon our city council, as many important issues will be brought to the floor today. In a very special way, we ask you to enlighten these women and men, so they may tackle and discuss new and vibrant ways of building a continued peace within our city. Lord, we ask your blessings upon our council president, Stephen J. Murphy, and on the 12 other city council members gathered today. May the committee reports, the motions, the resolutions, the consent, agenda items, and the votes to be taken, all truly reflect the hours of preparation that have been put into this decision-making process. We ask that all that will be accomplished today and all the days ahead be only for the very best of our great city. Lord, we ask your blessings now and forever. Amen.
Thank you, Father Brian, for your inspiring words. Now, please join us as Counselor Linehan leads us in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation, indivisible,天地无疆.
Counselor Linehan will escort the clergy from the podium. We have been joined by Counselors Yancy, Conley, and Baker since attendance, so we have a full house. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes from the last city council meeting stand approved. Seeing and hearing no corrections or objections, the minutes are so approved. Madam Clerk, communications from his honor, the mayor.
Docket number 0903, message and ordinance amending the City of Boston Code. Ordinances, Chapter 18, fees and charges filed in the office of the clerk on May 30, 2013.
0903 will refer to the Committee on Government Operations.
Docket number 0904, message in order to accept and expend reimbursements up to $77,500,000 for various government agencies, including the Federal Emergency Management Agency, known as FEMA, for expenses related to the April 15, 2013 Boston Marathon explosion.
Docket 0904 will be referred to Committee on Public Safety.
Docket number 0905, message in order to accept and expend reimbursements up to the amount of $4,700,000 for various government agencies, including the Federal Emergency Management Agency, known as FEMA, for expenses related to the February 8, 2013 blizzard.
0905 will be referred to Committee on Public Safety.
Docket number 0906, message and order for confirmation of the renewal of appointments of constables authorized to serve civil process upon filing of their bonds for the period commencing May 1, 2013 and ending April 30, 2016. Docket number 0907, message and order for confirmation of the appointment of new constables authorized to serve civil process upon filing of their bonds for the period commencing May 1, 2013 and ending April 30, 2016. Docket number 0908, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of inspectional services constables authorized to serve civil service upon filing of their bonds for the period commencing May 1, 2013 and ending April 30, 2016.
Chair recognizes City Counselor Matt O'Malley on all three dockets.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for suspension of the rules and make a motion for confirmation of these appointments. Very briefly, as of 2005, the Boston Police is now in charge of processing and running the background checks for all of these applicants to be a constable. There's approximately 50 names here, a mix of reappointments, some new constables, as well as ISD. The BPD, again, is in charge of processing applications, reviewing each applicant's background, criminal records check, residency, any court actions, domestic relation protective orders, and they finalize the list. It comes through us, so it's a little bit different than it was about a decade or so ago, where we would do all the vetting. Now, it's done by BPD, and I thank the clerk, who was, of course, the chair of Government Ops before I was, and went through this. So, this is just a vote that we need to take, but all the work's already been done in terms of the reviewing. So, again, I ask for suspension and confirmation of the appointment. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor O'Malley, at this time moves suspension of the rules and confirmation of dockets 0906, 0907, 0908, confirmation of the constables' bonds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Dockets 0906, 0907, and 0908 have passed. Reports of public officers and others.
Docket number 0909, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Geraldine M. Kadiah as chair of the Election Commission, her term expiring on March 31, 2014.
Docket 0909 will be placed on file.
Docket number 0910, communication was received from Deborah Shaw, chair of the Compensation Advisory Board regarding a report of the salaries of elected officials, department heads, and senior leadership positions, as well as salary ranges covered under the Compensation Advisory Board ordinance, CBC, Chapter 5, I'm sorry, Chapter 5, Section 5, .10.
Docket 0910 will be placed on file.
Docket number 0911, notice was received from the mayor in the appointment of Mark Pastnik as a member of the Boston Arts Commission for a term expiring April 1, 2018.
Docket 0911 will be placed on file.
Docket number 0913, communication was received from the city clerk transmitting a communication from the Boston Landmark Commission for city council action on the designation of the Charles River Speedway Administration Building, Landmark District in Brighton, and Isabella Stewart Gardner Museum in Boston as a landmark, in effect after July 5, 2013, if not acted upon.
Docket 0913 will be referred to Committee on Economic Development and Planning. Madam Clerk, did something happen to 0912?
Oh, I just...
I don't think we read that.
We're just... Thank you very much, Mr. President, for bringing that to my attention. Docket number 0912, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Ekua Holmes as a member of the Boston Arts Commission for a term expiring April 1, 2018.
Docket 0912 will be placed on file.
Docket number 0914, communication was received from the city clerk of the filing by the Boston Redevelopment Authority of the first report and decision of the Northampton Tower, Chapter 121A project.
Docket 0914 will be placed on file. Reports of committee.
Docket number 0812, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on April 14, 2013. Docket number 0812, message and order approving an appropriation of $1 million from the income of the George Francis Parkman Fund for the maintenance and improvement of the Boston Common and Park, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass.
Chair recognizes City Counselor Mark Siomo on docket 0812.
Thank you, Mr. President. We held a hearing on Thursday, May 23. Commissioner Pollak and Assistant Commissioner Jerry Cachetti attended. This is our annual appropriation through the Parkman Fund for upkeep of the garden, the commons, the fens, and other various parks throughout our great city. 90% of the funds are for personnel to do that maintenance. At this point, I recommend that this order pass.
Counselor Siomo moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0812 at this time. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Docket 0812 has passed. Matters recently heard for possible action.
Docket 0610, order for FY '14 operating capital and school budget, including annual appropriations, tax orders, loan orders, and tax-exempt refunding bonds.
Chair recognizes City Counselor Mark Siomo on dockets 0610 through 0630. Chair declares a two-minute recess.
The first order of business is our appropriation, $40 million appropriation for other post-employment benefits. At this time, we're up against the clock for the 60-day order. I am going to ask that we reject without prejudice, so that we can take it up with capital further down.
And what docket number is that?
0612.
0612. Madam Clerk, would you read 0612?
In the Committee of Ways and Means, docket number 0612, sponsored by the mayor, message and order approving the appropriation of $40 million to the other post-employment benefit liability trust fund, established under Section 20 of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 32B, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 8, 2013.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counselor Siomo, Chair of Ways and Means, moves rejection without prejudice of docket 0612. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Docket 0612 has been rejected without prejudice.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm calling for our first vote on capital today for further action. I'm happy to ask my colleagues for their first vote to assign this for further action for the dockets 0613 through 0630. Loan orders, as you know, require two votes, so we will have a couple of weeks in between before I'll be asking for the final vote on this matter. Some of the highlights of this capital plan include the continuing investment in Dudley Square, the new municipal building, public art, library enhancements, and street and parking improvements, new library in East Boston, reconstruction of Central Square, and American Legion Parkway renovations, the new downtown school, expansion of the Elliott, new computer-aided dispatch system for police, fire, and EMS, and improvements to many parks, playgrounds, and pools throughout the city of Boston, including bike paths and other infrastructure improvements. I believe this is a responsible plan that will help improve our neighborhoods and demonstrate our commitment to a green and economically viable Boston. I recommend that we pass this first vote today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Madam Clerk, would you please read each loan order individually, and then we will have a roll call vote, and then place it back into the Committee on Ways and Means?
Docket number 0610, message and order for annual appropriation and tax order for FY 2014, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 8, 2013. So, should I just... Now, we'll just do the roll call.
Yep.
Counselor Arroyo. Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Siomo.
Yes.
Counselor Siomo, yes. Counselor Conley. Counselor Conley, yes. Counselor Consalvo.
Yes.
Counselor Consalvo, yes. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Jackson, yes. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Lamatina, yes. Counselor Linehan. Counselor Linehan, yes. Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Presley. Counselor Presley, yes. Counselor Ross. Counselor Ross, yes. Counselor Yancy. Counselor Yancy. President, that received...
Unanimous vote. What docket number was that?
0610. I'm sorry.
Docket 0610 receives a unanimous vote and is reassigned to the Committee on Ways and Means for further action.
Docket number 0611, in the Committee of Ways and Means, sponsored by the mayor, message and order of an annual appropriation for the school department for FY 2014, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 8, 2013.
We'll call a roll on docket 0611.
Counselor Arroyo. Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker. Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Siomo.
We're in the middle of a roll call, Counselor. Counsel will take a brief recess.
No, I get a first and second vote. They get one vote.
All those in favor of reconsideration signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? None opposed? Madam Clerk, we will reconsider docket 0610, followed by docket 0611, which we're in the midst of a roll call doing, and then we will go to the capital loan orders that I thought we were doing when I originally called the loan orders to be read. So, let's go to docket 0610 to reject without prejudice. Which we've already done.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sure I'll be joined by the Chair of Ways and Means in calling for rejection of docket number 610, rejection without prejudice, not remanding back to committee, because if we take no action by next week, this becomes law.
We have a brief recess. 0610 being reconsidered. Chair recognizes Chair of Ways and Means, City Counselor Mark Siomo.
Yes, I rise to recommend that we reject the operating budget without prejudice at this time. We still have several hearings to conduct before our review is complete.
Counsel Yancy seconds the motion of the chair on docket 0610. The clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is rejecting the operating budget without prejudice.
Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Siomo. Counselor Siomo, yes. Counselor Conley.
Yes.
Counselor Conley, yes. Counselor Consalvo.
Yes.
Counselor Consalvo, yes. Counselor Jackson.
Yes.
Counselor Jackson, yes. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Lamatina, yes. Counselor Linehan. Counselor Linehan, yes. Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Presley. Counselor Presley, yes. Counselor Ross. Counselor Ross, yes. Counselor Yancy. Counselor Yancy, yes.
Docket 0610 has been rejected without prejudice. Docket 0611 is now under reconsideration by the council. The Chair of Ways and Means is recommending a rejection without prejudice. Clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is to reject docket 0611 without prejudice.
Counselor Arroyo. Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Siomo.
Yes.
Counselor Siomo, yes. Counselor Conley.
Yes.
Counselor Conley, yes. Counselor Consalvo.
Yes.
Counselor Consalvo, yes. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Jackson, yes. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Lamatina, yes. Counselor Linehan. Counselor Linehan, yes. Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Presley. Counselor Presley, yes. Counselor Ross. Counselor Ross, yes. Counselor Yancy. Counselor Yancy, yes.
Docket 0611 has been rejected without prejudice on a 13-to-nothing vote. Madam Clerk, docket 0613 and the other loan orders, next.
Docket number 0613, message and order for a loan order of $39,470,000 for acquiring land or interest in land for any purpose which the city is or may thereafter be authorized to acquire land or interests therein, and for construction of buildings or additions to such buildings where such addition increases the floor space of said buildings, including cost of original equipment and furnishing of said buildings, and addition and/or for remodeling, reconstruction, or making extraordinary repairs to public buildings owned by the city, including original equipment and landscaping, paving, and other site improvements incidental or directly related to any such remodeling and reconstruction or repair and/or for the purpose of city departments, including the school department, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 8, 2013.
Docket 0613 will require a roll call vote and then be remanded to Ways and Means. Clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Arroyo. Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker. Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Siomo. Counselor Siomo, yes. Counselor Conley. Counselor Conley, yes. Counselor Consalvo. Counselor Consalvo, yes. Counselor Jackson. Counselor... Counsel Jackson, yes. Counsel Lamatina. Counsel Lamatina, yes. Counsel Linehan. Counsel Linehan, yes. Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Presley. Counsel Presley, yes. Counsel Ross. Counsel Ross, yes. Counsel Yancey. Counsel Yancey, yes.
Docket 0613 has been read its first time and is assigned for further action.
In the Committee on Ways and Means, docket number 0614, sponsored by the mayor, message in order amending an appropriation order that would raise the amount of $22,650,000 to $29,850,000 for the purpose of closing out landfill areas, opening a new landfill, or making improvements to an existing landfill area, and for the construction of municipal outdoor recreational and athletic facilities, including the acquisition and development of land and the construction and reconstruction of facilities for the purpose of city departments, including the Parks Department and Public Works Department, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 8, 2013.
Docket 0614 will face its first reading and then be assigned for further action. Clerk will call the roll.
Counsel Arroyo. Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Siomo. Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Conley. Counsel Conley, yes. Counsel Consalvo. Counsel Consalvo, yes. Counsel Jackson. Counsel Jackson, yes. Counsel Lamatina. Counsel Lamatina, yes. Counsel Linehan. Counsel Linehan, yes. Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Presley. Counsel Presley, yes. Counsel Ross. Counsel Ross, yes. Counsel Yancey. Counsel Yancey, yes.
Docket 0614 has been read once and is assigned for further action.
In the Committee on Ways and Means, docket number 0615, sponsored by the mayor, message in order authorizing the city to enter into one or more lease purchase and installment sales agreements in FY 2014 in an amount not to exceed $26,200,000, and in fiscal year 2015 in an amount not to exceed $26,200,000 for various city departments and the acquisition of equipment and furtherance of their respective governmental functions filed in the office of the city clerk on April 8, 2013.
Docket 0615 will receive its first of two required votes. Clerk will call the roll.
Counsel Arroyo. Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Siomo. Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Conley. Counsel Conley, yes. Counsel Consalvo. Counsel Consalvo, yes. Counsel Jackson. Counsel Jackson, yes. Counsel Lamatina. Counsel Lamatina, yes. Counsel Linehan. Counsel Linehan, yes. Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Presley. Counsel Presley, yes. Counsel Ross. Counsel Ross, yes. Counsel Yancey. Counsel Yancey, yes.
Docket 0615 has been read once and is assigned for further action.
In the Committee on Ways and Means, docket number 0616, sponsored by the mayor, message in order for a loan order of $23,460,000 for acquiring land or interest in land for any purpose which the city is or may thereafter be authorized to acquire land or interests therein, and for the construction of buildings or any additional such buildings where such addition increases the floor space of said buildings, including the cost of original equipment and furnishing of said buildings, and addition and/or remodeling, reconstructing, or making extraordinary repairs to public buildings owned by the city, including original equipment and landscaping, paving, and other site improvements incidental or directly related to such remodeling, construction, or repair for the purposes of the city department, including the Boston Center for Youth and Families, Fire Department, Library, Parks and Recreation, Police, Property and Construction Management, Public Health Commission, Public Works Department, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 8, 2013.
Docket 0616 now faces its first of two required votes. Clerk will call the roll on docket 0616.
Counsel Arroyo. Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Siomo. Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Conley. Counsel Conley, yes. Counsel Consalvo. Counsel Consalvo, yes. Counsel Jackson. Counsel Jackson, yes. Counsel Lamatina. Counsel Lamatina, yes. Counsel Linehan. Counsel Linehan, yes. Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Presley. Counsel Presley, yes. Counsel Ross. Counsel Ross, yes. Counsel Yancey. Counsel Yancey, yes.
Docket 0616 has been read once and is assigned Ways and Means for further action. Docket 0617.
In the Committee on Ways and Means, docket number 0617, sponsored by the mayor, message in order for a loan order of $22,625,000 for the original construction of public ways or the extension or widening thereof, including land damages and the cost of pavement and sidewalks laid at the time of said construction, or the construction of stone, block, brick, cement, bituminous concrete, bituminous macadam, and other permanent pavement of similar lasting character, and for the original construction, surfacing, or resurfacing of municipally owned and operated off-street parking areas, and/or for the construction of sidewalks of bricks, bituminous concrete, stone or concrete installing macadam pavement or other road materials for resurfacing municipally owned or operated off-street parking areas, and the pavement of other road material or for the construction of walls or dikes for the protection of highway or property, and/or for the traffic signal and public lighting installation, and for the purpose of extending or improving such installations, and/or for the cost of engineering of architectural services for plans and specifications for the purposes of the BRA and for city departments, including the Property and Construction Management, Public Works, and Transportation, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 8, 2013.
Docket 0617 is facing its first of two required votes. Clerk will call the roll on docket 0617.
Counsel Arroyo. Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Siomo. Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Conley. Counsel Conley, yes. Counsel Consalvo. Counsel Consalvo, yes. Counsel Jackson. Counsel Jackson, yes. Counsel Lamatina. Counsel Lamatina, yes. Counsel Linehan. Counsel Linehan, yes. Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Presley. Counsel Presley, yes. Counsel Ross. Counsel Ross, yes. Counsel Yancey. Counsel Yancey, yes.
Docket 0617 has been read once and passed and is assigned for further action. Madam Clerk, docket 0618.
In the Committee on Ways and Means, docket number 0618, sponsored by the mayor, message in order for a loan order of $19,785,000 for the construction of municipal outdoor recreational or athletic facilities, including the acquisition and development of land and the construction and reconstruction of facilities, and/or for the cost of cleaning up and preventing pollution caused by existing or closed municipal facilities, landfills, or other solid waste-disposable facilities, and/or for the cost of engineering or architectural services for plans and specifications, and/or for developing land for burial purposes, and for constructing paths and avenues embellishing the grounds in city-owned cemeteries for the purposes of the Boston Redevelopment Authority and city departments, including the Parks and Recreation School Department and School Department, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 8, 2013.
Docket 0618 is facing its first of two required capital votes. Clerk will call the roll.
Counsel Arroyo. Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Siomo. Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Conley. Counsel Conley, yes. Counsel Consalvo. Counsel Consalvo, yes. Counsel Jackson. Counsel Jackson, yes. Counsel Lamatina. Counsel Lamatina, yes. Counsel Linehan. Counsel Linehan, yes. Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Presley. Counsel Presley, yes. Counsel Ross. Counsel Ross, yes. Counsel Yancey. Counsel Yancey, yes. In the committee...
Docket 0618 has been read a first time and is assigned for further action. Madam Clerk, docket 0619.
In the Committee on Ways and Means, docket 0619, sponsored by the mayor, message in order for a loan order of $17,140,000 for remodeling, reconstructing, and making extraordinary repairs to public buildings owned by the city, including original equipment, furnishing, and landscaping, paving, and other site improvements incidental or directly related to such remodeling, reconstruction, or repair, and/or for energy conservation, alternative energy, or renewable energy improvements to public buildings and facilities, and/or for the cost of departmental equipment, and/or for the cost of departmental equipment for the installation of safety alarm systems, including extending and improving such installations for the purpose of city departments, including the school department, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 8, 2013.
Docket 0619 is before us for its first of two required readings. The clerk will call the roll on docket 0619.
Docket number 0619, Counsel Arroyo. Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Siomo. Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Conley. Counsel Conley, yes. Counsel Consalvo. Counsel Consalvo, yes. Counsel Jackson. Counsel Jackson, yes. Counsel Lamatina. Counsel Lamatina, yes. Counsel Linehan. Counsel Linehan, yes. Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Presley. Counsel Presley, yes. Counsel Ross. Counsel Ross, yes. Counsel Yancey. Counsel Yancey, yes.
Docket 0619 has received its first reading and is assigned for further action.
In the committee... I'm sorry.
0620 is before the body for its first of two required readings. Clerk will read docket 0620.
In the Committee on Ways and Means, docket 0620, sponsored by the mayor, message in order for a loan order of $15,855,000 for the purposes of constructing and reconstructing bridges of stone or of iron superstructure, and/or for the cost of engineering or architectural services for plans and specifications for the purposes of city departments, including the Public Works Department, filed in the office of the clerk on April 8, 2013.
Docket 0620 will face its first of two required readings. Clerk will call the roll on docket 0620.
Docket 0620, Counsel Arroyo. Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker. Yes, Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Siomo. Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Conley. Counsel Conley. Counsel Conley, yes. Counsel Consalvo. Counsel Consalvo, yes. Counsel Jackson. Counsel Jackson, yes. Counsel Lamatina. Counsel Lamatina, yes. Counsel Linehan. Counsel Linehan, yes. Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Presley. Counsel Presley, yes. Counsel Ross. Counsel Ross, yes. Counsel Yancey. Counsel Yancey, yes.
Docket 0620 has been read once and passed. Clerk will read docket 0621.
In the Committee on Ways and Means, docket 0621, sponsored by the mayor, message in order for a loan order of $15,150,000 for remodeling, reconstructing, or making extraordinary repairs to public buildings owned by the city, including original equipment and landscaping, paving, and other site improvements incidental or directly related to such remodeling, reconstruction, or repair, and/or for energy conservation, alternative energy, or renewable energy improvements to public buildings or facilities, and/or for the cost of departmental equipment, and/or for the development, design, purchase, and installation of computer hardware and other data processing equipment, and computer-assisted integrated financial management and accounting systems, and/or for the development, design, and purchase of computer software incidental to the purchase, installation, or operation of computers, assisted integrated financial management and accounting systems for the purpose of city departments, including the school department, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 8, 2013.
Clerk will call the roll on docket 0621.
Docket number 0621, Counsel Arroyo. Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Siomo. Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Conley. Counsel Conley, yes. Counsel Consalvo. Counsel Consalvo, yes. Counsel Jackson. Counsel Jackson, yes. Counsel Lamatina. Counsel Lamatina, yes. Counsel Linehan. Counsel Linehan, yes. Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Presley. Counsel Presley, yes. Counsel Ross. Counsel Ross, yes. Counsel Yancey. Counsel Yancey, yes.
Docket 0621 has been read once, passed, and is assigned for further action. Docket 0622.
In the Committee on Ways and Means, docket number 0622, sponsored by the mayor, message in order for a loan order of $14,745,000 for remodeling and reconstructing of making extraordinary repairs to public buildings owned by the city, including original equipment, furnishing, and landscaping, paving, and other site improvements incidental or directly related to such remodeling, reconstruction, or repairs, and/or for energy conservation, alternative energy, or renewable energy improvements to public buildings and facilities, and/or for the cost of departmental equipment, and/or for the cost of departmental installation of safety alarm systems, including extending and improving such installation for the purposes of the city departments, including the library department, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 8, 2013.
Clerk will call the roll on docket 0622.
Docket number 0622, Counsel Arroyo. Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Siomo. Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Conley. Counsel Conley, yes. Counsel Consalvo. Counsel Consalvo, yes. Counsel Jackson. Counsel Jackson, yes. Counsel Lamatina. Counsel Lamatina, yes. Counsel Linehan. Counsel Linehan, yes. Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Presley. Counsel Presley, yes. Counsel Ross. Counsel Ross, yes. Counsel Yancey. Counsel Yancey, yes.
Docket 0622 has been read once, passed, and is assigned for further action. Clerk will read docket 0623. Caution all members, the use of iPhones is out of control at this point in time. I'd ask all to put the iPhones away and pay attention to... anybody who has a BlackBerry, put that away as well. Docket 0623 is up front and center. Thank you.
In the committee... In the Committee on Ways and Means, docket number 0623, sponsored by the mayor, message in order for a loan order of $12,240,000 for the development, design, purchase, and installation of computer hardware and other data processing equipment, and computer-assisted integrated financial management and accounting systems, and/or for the development, design, and purchase of computer software incidental to the purchase, installation, operation of computer hardware, other data processing equipment, and computer-assisted integrated financial management and accounting systems, and/or for the cost of departmental equipment, and/or for the fire alarm of police communication installation, and for the purpose of extending and improving such installations for the purposes of city departments, including the school department and the Department of Innovation and Technology, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 8, 2013.
Docket 0... The clerk will call the roll on docket 0623.
Docket number 0623, Counsel Arroyo. Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Siomo. Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Conley. Counsel Conley, yes. Counsel Consalvo. Counsel Consalvo, yes.
Counselor Consalvo.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Consalvo, yes. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Jackson, yes. Counselor Lamatina.
Yes.
Counselor Lamatina, yes. Counselor Linehan. Counselor Linehan, yes. Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Presley. Counselor Presley, yes. Counselor Ross.
Yes.
Counselor Ross, yes. And Counselor Yancey. Counselor Yancey.
Another unanimous vote.
Docket 0623 has been read once and is assigned for further action. Clerk will read docket 0624.
In the Committee on Ways and Means, docket 0624, sponsored by the mayor, message in order for a loan order of $4,695,000 for the cost of departmental equipment and/or for the traffic signal or public lighting installations and for the purpose of extending and improving such installations and/or for the cost of engineering and architectural services for plans and specifications for the purposes of the city department, including the Public Works and Transportation Department, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 8, 2013.
Clerk will call the roll on docket 0624.
Docket number 0624, Counselor Royo. Counselor Royo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Siomo. Counselor Siomo, yes. Counselor Conley.
Yes.
Counselor Conley, yes. Counselor Consalvo. Counselor Consalvo, yes. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Jackson, yes. Counselor Lamatina.
Yes.
Counselor Lamatina, yes. Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan, yes. Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Presley. Counselor Presley, yes. Counselor Ross. Counselor Ross, yes. And Counselor Yancey. Counselor Yancey, another unanimous vote.
Docket 0624 has been read once, is assigned for further action. And clerk will read docket 0625 at this point.
In the Committee on Ways and Means, docket number 0625, sponsored by the mayor, message in order for a loan order of $3,535,000 for the cost of departmental equipment for the purposes of city departments, including the Fire, Impacts, and Recreation Department, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 8, 2013.
Docket 0625, clerk will call the roll.
Docket 0625, Counselor Royo. Counselor Royo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Siomo. Counselor Siomo, yes. Counselor Conley.
Yes.
Counselor Conley, yes. Counselor Consalvo. Counselor Consalvo, yes. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Jackson, yes. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Lamatina, yes. Counselor Linehan. Counselor Linehan, yes. Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Presley. Counselor Presley, yes. Counselor Ross. Counselor Ross, yes. Counselor Yancey. Counselor Yancey, yes. Another unanimous vote.
Docket 0625 has been read once and passed and is assigned for further action. The chair would like to take a moment to welcome back to the chamber an esteemed former member of the city council, Councilor Emeritus Michael McCormick has joined us. Madam Clerk, please call docket 0626.
In the Committee on Ways and Means, docket 0626, sponsored by the mayor, message in order for a loan order of $1,610,000 for the surplus property disposition fund credited to the capital fund for the environmental remediation and demolition of the former B2 police station in Dudley Square for the purposes of the property construction and construction management department, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 8, 2013.
Clerk will call the roll on docket 0626.
Docket 0626, Counselor Royo.
Yes.
Counselor Royo, yes. Counselor Baker. Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Siomo.
Yes.
Counselor Siomo, yes. Counselor Conley.
Yes.
Counselor Conley, yes. Counselor Consalvo. Counselor Consalvo, yes. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Jackson, yes. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Lamatina, yes. Counselor Linehan. Counselor Linehan, yes. Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Presley. Counselor Presley, yes. Counselor Ross. Counselor Ross, yes. Counselor Yancey.
Yes.
Counselor Yancey, yes. We have a unanimous vote, Mr. President.
Do a roll call on. Read 0627?
Yeah. Docket 0627.
In the Committee on Ways and Means, docket 0627, sponsored by the mayor, message in order for a loan of $1,010,000 for the financing of various capital projects for the purposes of the Boston Center for Youth and Families, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 8, 2013.
Clerk will call the roll on docket 0627.
Docket 0627, Counselor Royo.
Yes.
Counselor Royo, yes. Counselor Baker. Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Siomo. Counselor Siomo, yes. Counselor Conley. Counselor Conley, yes. Counselor Consalvo.
Yes.
Counselor Consalvo, yes. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Jackson, yes. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Lamatina, yes. Counselor Linehan. Counselor Linehan, yes. Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Presley. Counselor Ross. Counselor Ross, yes. And Counselor Yancey.
Yes.
Counselor Yancey, yes.
Docket 0627 has been read once, passed, and is assigned for further action. Madam Clerk, docket 0628.
In the Committee on Ways and Means, docket number 0628, sponsored by the mayor, message in order for a loan of $710 million for the purpose of planting shade trees, planning, designing, acquiring land for constructing and originally equipping structures and facilities. It is authorized to construct and/or remodeling, reconstructing, or making major alterations, additions and repairs to existing facilities, including original equipment and landscaping, paving, and other site improvements incidental or directly related to such remodeling, reconstruction, or repair for the purposes of city departments, including the Parks and Recreation Department, filed in the clerk- in the office of the clerk on April 8, 2013.
Clerk will call the roll on docket 0628.
Docket 0628, Counselor Royo. Counselor Royo, yes. Counselor Baker. Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Siomo. Counselor Siomo, yes. Counselor Conley. Counselor Conley, yes. Counselor Consalvo.
Yes.
Counselor Consalvo, yes. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Jackson, yes. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Lamatina, yes. Counselor Linehan. Counselor Linehan, yes. Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Oh, yeah.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Presley. Counselor Ross. Counselor Ross, yes. And Counselor Yancey.
Yes.
Counselor Yancey, yes.
Re- one vote, Mr. President.
Docket 0628 has been read once, assigned for further action. Clerk will read docket 0629.
In the Committee on Ways and Means, docket number 0629, sponsored by the mayor, message in order for a loan of $205 million for the acquiring land or interest in land for any purpose for which the city is or may thereafter be authorized to acquire land or interest therein, and for the construction of buildings and/or for additions to such buildings where such additions increase the floor space of said buildings, including the cost of original equipment and furnishing of said buildings and additions for the purposes of city departments, including property construction management, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 8, 2013.
Clerk will call the roll on docket 0629.
Docket 0629, Counselor Royo.
Yes.
Counselor Royo, yes. Counselor Baker. Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Siomo. Counselor Siomo, yes. Counselor Conley. Counselor Conley, yes. Counselor Consalvo. Counselor Consalvo, yes. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Jackson, yes. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Lamatina, yes. Counselor Linehan. Counselor Linehan, yes. Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Presley. Counselor Presley, yes. Counselor Ross. Counselor Ross, yes. Counselor Yancey. Counselor Yancey, yes.
Docket 0629 has been read once and is assigned for further action. Clerk will read docket 0630.
In the Committee on Ways and Means, docket number 0630, sponsored by the mayor, message in order for a loan order of $205 million in aid of the Economic Development and Industrial Corporation and the Boston Redevelopment Authority, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 8, 2013.
Clerk will call the roll on docket 0630.
Docket 0630, Counselor Royo.
Yes.
Counselor Royo, yes. Counselor Baker. Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Siomo. Counselor Siomo, yes. Counselor Conley. Counselor Conley, yes. Counselor Consalvo.
Yes.
Counselor Consalvo, yes. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Jack- Jackson, yes. I'm sorry. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Lamatina, yes. Counselor Linehan. Counselor Linehan, yes. Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Presley. Counselor Presley, yes. Counselor Ross. Counselor Ross, yes. Counselor Yancey. Counselor Yancey, yes. A unanimous vote, Mr. President.
Docket 0630 has been read once and is assigned for further action to the Committee on Ways and Means. Um, motions.
No.
Or, oh, no, docket 0631, excuse me.
Docket 0631, message in order authorizing the mayor's Office of Arts, Tourism, and Special Events to accept and expend a grant of $133,320 from Massachusetts Cultural Council to support year-round cultural programming agendas of Boston's cultural and educational organizations.
Chair recognizes City Councilor Charles Yancey on docket 0631.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. We convened a hearing on docket number 0631 this past Monday at 10:00 a.m. to consider this grant application. And the committee received testimony from the head of- the director of the mayor's Office of Arts, Tourism, and Special Events, as well as his two staff members. Uh, and we concluded that this should be approved if funds a variety of cultural organizations in the city of Boston, uh, including the Asian American Resource Worship, the Haley's House, the China Program Center, the Freedom Trail Foundation, the Gay Men's Choir, uh, the city, Boston City Singers, and dozens of others. The relatively small grants were actually passing through to these organizations based on their necessity to promote culture in the city of Boston, so urging passage of docket number 0631.
Counselor Yancey is moving acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0631 at this time. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, the ayes have it. Docket 0631 has passed. Motions, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 0915, Counselor Consalvo offered the following order for hearing to examine how to save the Boston Housing Authority Resident Services Program.
Chair recognizes City Councilor Rob Consalvo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, on May 1st, the Resident Services Program of the Boston Housing Authority was ended. And it was ended due to cuts on the federal level that actually funded the program. However, the impact of those cuts locally is dramatic and devastating. Um, because of the Resident Service Program being eliminated, all the Resident Services Coordinators in the Boston Housing Authority were eliminated. Um, that affects over 3,500 elderly and disabled residents in all of our public housing developments in the city of Boston, impacting nearly every neighborhood of our city. And so while, yes, uh, the issue is related to federal government and sequestration and fiscal cuts on the federal level, it had- this particular issue has a dire and very serious impact on our local residents constituents here in the city of Boston, folks who are still going to live in our public housing developments. Uh, the Resident Service Coordinators, who are now eliminated, work day-to-day with residents in the city of Boston's public housing developments on health care and providing health care services, on personal care, on nutrition services, on money management, on substance abuse treatment, and a whole slew of other, uh, issues and efforts in our public housing development that help keep each of our public housing developments safe and also keep our public housing developments and the people in it living a tremendous and good quality of life. So there are going to be some tough decisions that we're going to have to make in the BHA in terms of how we're going to fill the gap on this. Uh, and we all are strong supporters of public housing in this, uh, chamber. We're all great supporters of Bill McGonigal and his team over the BHA, and they do a tremendous job. And they need our help, Mr. President. They need our help, and I think it's timely that we have this hearing as soon as possible. I'm hoping you refer to the Committee on Housing, which I chair, so that we can bring Bill in and talk to him about how we're going to close the gap, this very serious gap on this issue of the Resident Services Program. How does the BHA intend on handling all of those issues and filling the needs of all those residents who depended on this program? How are we going to, especially with the summer months coming, uh, fill the gap in terms of some of the public safety issues and substance abuse issues that may be out there? And how can we work together to, one, see if we can close that gap with additional federal assistance? Or is it something in a timely manner, uh, since we're dealing with the city's budget as well? Um, is it something that a stopgap the city can step into and work with the Ways and Means Committee on possibly identifying funding? I know everyone's looking for funding for things, and our times are tight as we balance our budget. But this is a vital program affecting over 3,500 residents of our city, of our public housing developments. They need our help. They deserve our support. And I look forward to hearing to see if we can address this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Consalvo. Chair recognizes Counselor Tito Jackson.
Chair, I rise to compliment Counselor Consalvo on bringing this issue forward. Um, it's a very important issue. Um, as a district councilor, I actually rely on many of these folks, um, in my interface with, uh, the elderly facilities. Um, Mr. President, I believe it was you, um, as well as the whole council, who stood, uh, about a year ago, um, after a tragic event that occurred in Brighton, uh, where we had an elderly person who was actually attacked, uh, by a disabled, uh, individual. Um, and we are working, um, at the highest levels to make sure that, uh, we make that distinction. Um, I think what this brings up is that we need more help, uh, rather than less help. The people who were actually interfacing, I think out of that, uh, about 40 folks, only about seven of them were directly in these facilities. We actually needed more at that time. Um, so I think as Counselor Consalvo brings this forward, I think we also need to really rethink, um, the, the access that these facilities have relative to these programs. Um, I believe more is better. And I also don't believe that we can skimp on, um, the quality of life for some of our most important individuals in our city. The people who we've promised that if they take care of us, we'll take care of them, and that's our elderly population. Um, thank you. Please add my name, and I appreciate your leadership on this.
Counselor Consalvo. Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Please add the name of Counselor Tito Jackson. Please also add the name of Counselor Frank Baker, Counselor Mark Siomo, uh, Counselor Ayanna Presley, Counselor Mike Ross, Counselor Matt O'Malley. Chair recognizes Counselor Bill Linehan.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I rise to commend the author. This is a very important order, and, uh, and I, I too will be looking forward to a speedy hearing and, and, uh, and his recommendation that there may be something we as a council can do, uh, in this budget's, uh, time to, uh, to put in a stopgap measure. These people provide the most important services to the elderly in the facilities. And, uh, they've been out organizing themselves. And, uh, we've all had visits from folks. And what we feel that, uh, and I feel that is very important, and I support it wholeheartedly, and please add my name.
Please add the name of Counselor Bill Linehan. Chair recognizes City Councilor Charles Yancey.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. President. I too rise to commend, uh, good counselor from District 5 for offering this. Uh, my staff was- had actually prepared a late file on this very subject. Uh, but I want to commend, uh, again, a colleague from District 5. We cannot afford to allow our senior citizens and disabled to go without these resident services. We can't stand by solemnly. Uh, it was very abrupt, the termination of, uh, many of the staffers who provide this service. Uh, but more important than the employees who were let go is the services that they provide to ensure that the interests of, particularly our senior citizens are being defended. They did a great job. Uh, this also means loss of translation services for, uh, English-language learners in our housing development. And it simply doesn't make sense. I know this is a tough time financially, I know this is a tough time financially, but like everything else we do here, we make very conscious choices of how to spend the scarce dollars that we have, and I think it's altogether appropriate for us to have an expedited hearing. I'd like to have my name added, and again, I commend the maker.
Please add the name of Council Charles Yancey. Please also add my name. Please add the name of Councilor Sal Lamatina. Chair recognizes Council Felix Arroyo.
I rise to commend the author. As so many of us do, I suspect as all of us do, we very often visit these buildings and speak with our constituents, because that's where they are. And in a recent visit, they were—and very rightfully so—the main concern was this, the Resident Service coordinators, and so much so that it happened to be that the significant percentage of the residents there spoke a language other than English as their first language, and the resident coordinator also played the role of translating for them things that came in, and they were really nervous because they felt completely in the dark now that that person wasn't around. So I'm very grateful for my colleague from Hyde Park for having filed this. I'd love to add my name, and looking forward to the hearing and seeing if we can help remedy this situation.
Thank you, Council Arroyo. Please add the name of Council Felix Arroyo. Please also add the name of City Council John Connolly. In that matter, docket 0915 will be referred to the Committee on Housing. Adam Clerk, docket 916.
Docket 0916, Council Jackson offered the following resolution, supporting the development of partnerships with private, public, and nonprofit institutions in the city of Boston and the city of Yaroslav, Russia, in order to foster cultural, educational, and economic opportunities.
Chair recognizes City Council Tito Jackson on docket 0916.
Thank you, Mr. President. As the chair of the Global Opportunities and Innovation and Technology Committee, I began a conversation in February with some friends from Russia, and I would say, Mr. President, I actually questioned my timing on this. I questioned whether or not this was an okay time to bring this forward, considering and understanding the sensitivities that all of us, you included, in this room are dealing with relative to the bombing. But with that said, when I got a call from our friends in Yaroslav the day after the bombing to send their condolences, to let us know that they cared about us too, that the partnerships that we were talking about were not only in the public, private, and education sector, that a city that's 600,000 people just like us, that has a lot of universities just like us, stood in unity and solidarity with us. Mr. President, I realized that I wasn't going to let—and I don't think the city of Boston or the city council should let two people who had malintent pull us away from our friends and comrades all over this world, because I know that the world stands with us, and I know that as a city, we stand together, and to quote someone who works up the street, "This is a time to turn to each other, not on each other," and those are the words of Governor Patrick. We have an opportunity to form a relationship and a partnership with a city very much like ours, and I think we should do that. And so that's why I bring this forward. I bring it forward as a resolution, because there's work to continue to be done, and I would ask for suspension and passage today and that we continue this partnership. But again, Mr. President, I think the main objective that we have to see is that we're not going to let two individuals turn us around. We're going to continue to push forward as a city and as a community, and to come together and allow folks to partner with us. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Jackson. Council Jackson, at this time, moves suspension of the rules on adoption of docket 0916. All those in favor, say aye. Those no, the ayes have it. Docket 0916 has been adopted. Adam Clerk, docket 0917.
Docket 0917, Councilors Jackson and Pressley offered the following order for hearing regarding the availability of liquor licenses to businesses seeking to operate in Dudley Square.
Chair recognizes City Council Tito Jackson on docket 0917.
Mr. President, I rise as the proud District 7 city councilor, who right now is seeing a very large building being built right in the center of my community, a place that I can remember as a child that had the bright lights of businesses and a bustling retail industry. For a long time, Dudley Square has been offline and not where it needs to be relative to businesses, jobs, and economic development. Well, it's a new day, Mr. President. We see the bright lights of new businesses headed in our direction. We see investment, including a $115 million investment by this body and the city in our district. But what we don't see, Mr. President, are the hundreds of liquor licenses and restaurants that we see in my good friend Sal Lamatina's community. We don't see the hundreds of liquor licenses and folks going to restaurants that we see in my friend Bill Linehan's community. We have seen places turn around. We have seen places in the city take hold, such as in Council Ross's district. I can recall that area in the Brigham Circle area when I was a child, when there was an Osco Drug there, and we saw what we were able to do in those parts of the city, and we need to see the same thing right here in Dudley Square. And I think it's really important to add to the vibrancy in that neighborhood and community, to unlock the potential in that neighborhood and community that we actually have place-based liquor licenses that are in the Dudley Square area. When we look at the loss of licenses, most of them have gone to other parts of the city, and what I would like to see, in conjunction with Council Pressley and the great work that she's been doing and leading us in this space, is I would like to see 10, 20, 30 in that area, so that we can see the revitalization that we need and we've seen in other neighborhoods come to the Dudley Square area. We have an opportunity, and we have a real opportune time to do it while the construction is actually occurring, and we have more and more construction that's actually coming online, and I think this is an integral and important component. We know that these licenses oftentimes—and you've actually noted this, Mr. President—cost $350,000, $400,000, $450,000, which puts them out of reach for many of our local and small restaurants, in particular mom-and-pop shops. We want to see those shops be able to open up, as well as larger shops, and without having an opportunity to get these types of licenses, these restaurants will not naturally occur in our district. So I would ask that we have an expedited hearing on this. I think it's very, very timely, considering that the Ferdinand Building is slated to open in November 2014, that we get right on this and begin to push this forward. I truly appreciate the opportunity, and I also ask that as we have stood for one another in other neighborhoods, as we stood for the folks in West Roxbury and other parts of the city, that we continue to look at how we build up all of the neighborhoods, all of the city centers in the city of Boston, so Boston can elevate. And I would just leave you, Mr. President, with, as goes Dudley, we'll go the city of Boston. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council Jackson. Chair recognizes Council Bill Linehan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to commend the author and to only—and to comment on his profound words, and they are, "To see what the hospitality industry has done to my community and allowed us to create jobs, to stabilize various areas throughout my entire district. If you don't have the ability to produce a liquor license, and you don't—then you don't have the ability to have a beer and wine license. You don't have the ability to put on a restaurant. The Dudley Square neighborhood needs those fine things so that they—it's the third largest sector of our economy in Massachusetts, is hospitality, and Dudley Square needs to be able to capture, as the other neighborhoods have, part of that economy." And so I'm in full agreement with him and in full support of doing that. Thank you, and I'd please sign my name.
Please add the name of Council Bill Linehan. Please also add the name of Council Mark Ciomo, Council Felix Arroyo, Council Rob Consalvo. Do you wish to speak?
I do.
Chair recognizes Council Rob Consalvo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, because as we keep talking about the liquor license issue and all the great work everybody's doing, no matter what happens on—whether it's Dudley or Hyde Park or Roseland, there's still this loophole that needs to be closed that ties the license of a liquor license to the address and not the individual. And as you know, in our Fairmount Avenue address, a place was held hostage, a vacant storefront, for over a year, while one license was in search of another location but had been evicted from that location on Fairmount Avenue, and because the license was tied to that address and had been renewed at that address, for a whole year, we had a vacant storefront, and no other license could go in it. Now, I'm proud to report, just yesterday, the new Fairmount Grill opened in that location, a brand-new, beautiful restaurant, but it took a year and a half because of this crazy loophole that doesn't allow a license to go into another address if there's another license tied to that address, even if the person has been evicted from that address. So somehow, no matter what we're doing with this issue of liquor license, needs to close that loophole that says, "If I renew my license on January 1st, we get evicted on January 2nd, and I know the license is good for a year. As I'm in search somewhere else, that other address should be free and clear and be allowed to have another restaurant to go in there to eliminate a vacant storefront." It's a crazy loophole that I probably no one ever thought of hundreds of years ago when they came up with the whole law around this, and we need to change that as part of this process.
Thank you, Council Consalvo. Do you wish to have your name added to this? Please add the name of Council Rob Consalvo. Chair recognizes Council Charles Yancey. Please add the name of Council Mike Ross, Council Matt O'Malley. Council Yancey, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to commend the makers. This is a very important issue and one that we've been dealing with from time to time, but I certainly believe that if we're going to promote economic development in the city of Boston, we have to encourage a lively city and provide opportunities for entrepreneurs to take advantage of that liveliness by extending these licenses, and also an appropriate time to look at, not only with regards to Dudley Square, but other commercial districts in the city of Boston as well. So I'd like to have my name added, and again, I commend the two makers. Thank you.
Please add the name of Council Charles Yancey. Please also add my name, add the name of Council Frank Baker. And the matter, docket 0917, will be referred to Committee on Economic Development and Council Lamatina, do you wish to add your name? Okay, I'm seeing a lot of pointing, but nobody's hitting their buttons.
Really, this city needs a beer and wine license, and I don't understand why we're being held hostage from the state, you know what I mean? We should control the beer and wine licenses in this city, and so whoever the next mayor is, we gotta—
Thank you, Council Lamatina. Is there anybody else wishing to speak on docket 0917? I know. Council Pressley, do you wish to—
No.
Thank you. Docket 0917 will be referred to the Committee on Economic Development and Planning. If any counselor wishes to speak on a matter, they're to hit the request button in the front of their—then the chair will recognize the blinking light, as has been done for the last 60 years here. Don't have osmosis up here, folks. 918, Adam Clerk.
Docket number 0918, Councilor Ross offered the following order for hearing to support Boston's growing senior LGBT community.
Very good. Chair recognizes Council Mike Ross.
Mr. President.
Thank you.
Mr. President, all of us have taken strong stands for marriage equality for the LGBT community, and this is a very pro-LGBT council. I'm so proud to serve on it. There are new vanguards, new barriers, however, every day for this and other communities. And I can tell you, as the son of a 71-year-old openly gay woman, that the issue of aging is an issue for all aging LGBT elders. And fortunately, my mother and partner are doing great, but as people start to age alone and consider going into some sort of institutional setting, the question about their being open is asked again, and what we have is some seniors actually re-closeting themselves as they go into a care environment, where they may have a next-door neighbor or a caregiver who doesn't think like them, who doesn't think like us, and makes them second-guess who they are and their identity at the twilight of their lives. This is an issue that shouldn't be new to anyone. It's certainly something that the Stonewall seniors are talking about, our friends Gordon Burns and Jim Campbell—I know that Ethos is talking about this. They had a luncheon just today that Council Pressley attended. This is an important issue, and the real question is, what are we doing in the city to message and connect with our senior gathering places, our senior homes, our senior—our seniors? And so the Public Health Commission, I believe, and other departments like the Elderly Commission are uniquely positioned to try to make sure that here in Boston, we're on the forefront of this issue. So I'd like to have a hearing and invite the Public Health Commission, invite the Elderly Commission in, to figure out exactly how we're marketing, messaging, communicating, and checking in with our senior institutions to help make sure that anyone who is in the twilight of their lives are given the care and the dignity that they deserve, and especially someone who spent their entire life trying to fight through that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Ross. Chair recognizes Council Matt O'Malley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just briefly want to rise to thank and commend my good colleague and friend from District 8, ask that my name be added, and just urge him, as we go forward with this important hearing, to invite some of the social service agencies and the organizations that are addressing these very issues. There's a fantastic group called the LGBT Aging Project, which addresses many of these things. He mentioned Ethos. Dale Mitchell is someone I know—we all know well, lives in Jamaica, plays and runs Ethos, which does yeoman's work for seniors, and I appreciate the public health aspect as well. Lesbian women have higher rates of breast cancer than their heterosexual counterparts, and there are so many issues that you wouldn't even think of, but it's important to have this conversation and see the way that Boston can truly be a welcoming, safe, wonderful city as it's been for so many years. So I thank the author and look forward to the hearing.
Please add the name of Council Matt O'Malley. Please also add the name of Council Ayana Pressley, Council Bill Linehan, Council Sal Lamatina, Council Tito Jackson, Council Rob Consalvo, Council Charles Yancey, Council John Connolly, Council Mark Ciomo, Council Frank Baker, Council Felix Arroyo. Adam Clerk, please add my name. Chair recognizes—
I'll just—
Okay. Docket 00—before I assign this, I want to take a brief recess, ask Council Ross, Council Pressley, and Council Arroyo to come forward. Traditionally to the Committee on Women and Healthy Communities.
Docket 0919, Councilor Connolly offered the following order for hearing to explore having institutions partner with Boston Public Schools to build and renovate school facilities in exchange for fast-track permitting.
Chair recognizes Council John Connolly on docket 0919.
Thank you, Mr. President. This body knows better than any body in— This body knows better than any body in the city of Boston, including the School Committee, I think, the woes of Boston Public Schools when it comes to our facilities. And presently, the Boston Public Schools have $1.8 billion in new construction needs that were identified. They have $640 million in needed renovations and repairs, and they have $500 million in deferred maintenance costs. And Boston Public Schools came before us just the other day, as part of our budget process, to talk about their long-term facilities plan. And I think the essence of this was that the plan is very much in development. And what I didn't see in the plan was any way to dig out of this hole. What I did see was a desire to finally respond to all of the criticism and all of the problems by categorizing and coming up with an inventory of needed repairs. But I didn't see anything relative to financing behind it to make it happen. And I'll draw just to one quick example, and that's access to excellence, which we in this body know all too well. And we look at the Mission Hill K-8 site today. We all know that we went through that very difficult process of uprooting a successful school there and moving it over to Jamaica Plain. And what we were told would happen as a result of that was that Fenway High School would get to move into the Mission Hill facility and have brand-new laboratories and a state-of-the-art facility. And we were told that the result of that happening would allow our only performing arts high school to get major renovations, to give it true performance art facilities. And we came to find out just the other day at our Capitol Facilities hearing here that that is not going to happen for at least another year, when we were promised that it would be ready for September 2013. They can't even promise us September of 2014 right now. So we know the Facilities Department and BPS has to get their act together, and we know that the plan they're putting out right now doesn't go far enough. So in an effort not just to criticize, though the criticism is very deserved, I want to offer a potential solution, something that can help get us on the right track, something that can help us make significant headway in digging out of this hole. And that is to look at our large-scale development projects and offer the option to developers to say that we'll give you a fast-track permitting process and community review process, and we'll keep it to six months. And we'll have the full, robust process, but we'll guarantee that we'll get it done in six months in exchange for you either building a new school or adopting a major school renovation project in the city. One option that could happen here is that within the very new development, we could locate a Boston Public School. New York has presented a great option here, where they built an environmental school on the grounds of a new residential development. But it doesn't have to be that. It could be the renovation of an existing structure on another side of the city, or it could be the construction of a downtown school in the Back Bay or the Fenway area. It could be any of these pieces. And from picking the brains of several developers, what I heard was, let me tell you, if you could guarantee me an answer within six months, that would be well worth the price of contributing to a project like that. I'd know I would be investing in Boston's future, and I also know I wouldn't have to go to a three -- through a three-to-five-year development process and sink all sorts of costs to potentially get a no answer at the end of the day. And I want to be clear about this. It'll be a true community process, and there will still be the community benefits that flow back through any mitigation agreement. And if you go through that process and it's not a right project, it still gets a red light or a no. But if it gets a yes and they've opted for the fast track, we know that our Boston Public Schools are going to get something out of it. They're going to get a new school, or they're going to get a major renovation. And that's the way that we ought to be making partnerships work in this city, and it's the way we can start to dig out of this hole. So I want to have a hearing here, and I want to bring all the parties in. Let's get the BRA in here. Let's get neighborhood development in here. Let's get the institutional and private sector in here. And let's, most important, let's get Boston Public School families in here and talk about what we can do to truly leverage the resources that we have in this city for the benefit of all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Connolly. Chair recognizes Councilor Bill Limahan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to commend the author. This is an appealing innovation and idea and one that I'd like to explore. Please add my name. Thank you.
Please add the name of Councilor Bill Limahan. Please also add the name of Councilor Matt O'Malley, Councilor Frank Baker, Councilor Tito Jackson, Councilor Sal Lamatina. And Madam Clerk, please add my name. Doc at 0919 will be referred to the Committee on Education.
Doc at number 0920, Councilor Ross offered the following order for hearing to discuss the transfer of Hackney Division from the Police Department to the Transportation Department.
Chair recognizes Councilor Mike Ross.
Thank you, Mr. President. Everyone's read in the last two months about the taxis. We've all seen the issues, and we all probably have our own opinion about taxis. I think it's important that we discuss it, that one of us raises it, and I wanted to do that today. You know, whether you think the issue is about how we treat our taxi drivers, or whether or not they should be independent contractors or employees, or whether or not they should be unionized or not, or whether or not technology should play a better role in how our cabs are dispatched, or whether or not we should try to figure out how to correct the melee that occurs at 2:00 in the morning on the weekends with our taxicab. Whether you have any opinion whatsoever on taxis in the city of Boston, I would suggest that so long as the taxi or the Hackney Division is housed in the Boston Police Department, where the police are committed to ending crime on our streets and preventing crime upon our citizens, that any other issue, any other operational issue, including that of taxis, will always be a distant second place. And it's not because we don't have a great police department. It's not because they can't do more than one thing at a time. It's because what we've seen in the last two months, and since then, the number of shootings we've seen in our community on almost a regular basis, we all have to acknowledge that the issues that are raised with taxis and the issues of life and death, there is no comparison, that taxis will always be way back there. And so why not take the Taxi Division and all the issues that we all have our opinions on and put it in the department that's responsible for transportation, the department that deals with bicycles and pedestrians and automobiles and valet operation and all transportation planning in our city, and put them in the same department? That department can then, through its department head, through its cabinet chief, look at and deal with the problems as they arise. It won't be a boiling teapot that finally someone can get to when everything else is settled. It will be something that could be tended to every single day. I just think this is just a common sense solution to a problem that hasn't had to rise to the level that it's become. And I'd like to see the department move to the Transportation Department. I think now might be a good time to talk about it. Whether or not it happens in the next, you know, X months, I don't know. But I'd love to see this eventually happen. I think this will help all of us. I think it will help taxi drivers. I think it will help tourism in the city of Boston. I think it will help transportation. I think it will help public transit. I think it will help technology. I think it will help fairness and equity. I think it will help our economy. So I think in the end, this is the right move. I hope others agree. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Ross. A few years ago, the clerk and I investigated this issue as both members of the council and found that the problem was the impediment of state law, which gives the police commissioner sole authority over taxicabs. So I believe in order to do this, we would have to change state law. I think it makes sense to try. Chair recognizes Councilor Bill Limahan.
Mr. President, and I rise to commend my colleague from Mission Hill, because this is another really good idea. Geez, maybe half the body should run for mayor all the time, because we're coming up with some great ideas here. I'm excited about this year. As a council -- as a council member. Hey, oh, sorry, Rob. And I look to support it and to investigate it, and I think that maybe a special law and a home rule is in order for something like this. So sign my name, please.
Please sign Councilor Limahan on. Chair recognizes Councilor Tito Jackson.
It's something we need to explore. Was very happy to co-sponsor the author's hearing on the 6% that we have. People forget they're actually driving folks to basically lie to people, because they're losing 6% every time we swipe our credit card in that car. The other underlying issue is that many of these folks live in my district. I actually recently met with one of the taxicab owners who wants to move into my district. And he let me know that many of these -- many of the workers actually live in my district. This is a vital function of a city at our level. This is vital infrastructure that we need if we're going to speak about jobs and economic development, if we're going to speak about a convention center that wants to expand. We have to have transparency in this department. I would also note that the Boston Transportation Department does a really good job around the area of revenue. We can ask any of the folks in this room, because we all get tickets, too. So I think relative to those issues and the finances, I think this is something that we really have to explore. If it takes a home rule, so be it. And I also note what Councilor Ross said. I would love to see more people, more police officers on the street. I think this is the -- it would be the best place, considering what has happened in the past couple of weeks, to see more folks on the street. We're happy to see a class that's coming out, but I think it's really important that we take vital resources and put them in the right place. Please add my name, Mr. President.
Please add the name of Councilor Tito Jackson. Please also add my name, the name of Councilor Moxiomo, Councilor Felix Arroyo, and Councilor Lamatina, and Councilor O'Malley. Chair recognizes Councilor Charles Yancey.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Just very briefly, I believe that a change is necessary with regards to how we regulate our taxicabs. The current system is broken. The current system is unfair to drivers, to owners, and even to some of the fairs themselves. So I think it's altogether appropriate that we have a public hearing on it. Over the past dozen years or so, I've been meeting with members of the taxicab industry over similar issues in the sense that the Hackney Division is a little more than a fiefdom, that sometimes is pretty tyrannical in terms of how they treat some of our taxi drivers. But I think it'd be very healthy to take a look, a public look at that issue, and I'm looking forward to the hearing. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Yancey. Chair recognizes Councilor La Martina.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I just want to commend the maker to add my name. You know, I worked in the Transportation Department for many years. We do regulate trolley tours and the buses and a lot of other commercial vehicles. And we also have police officers assigned to the Transportation Department. So I'm interested in this issue. I think it's important for us as a council to address this issue. So I just want to take this opportunity to commend the maker.
Do you wish to have your name added?
Please add my name.
Please add the name of Councilor Sal Lamatina to the -- and we're back to the author, Councilor Ross.
Yeah, quickly, thank you for all the name adds. I just, and comments, I was remiss, and anyone listening should know that the mayor's office has hired someone to do a study on what should best practices be for the taxi industry. I didn't want to give the indication that we're not, we and government aren't doing anything, but I thought it was important for the council to weigh in on this issue as well. And I appreciate the efforts of the mayor's office and look forward to see what kind of report comes back from that report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Ross. This actually is going from the jurisdiction of public safety to City and Neighborhood Services. So right now, it should be a joint hearing unless you accede that it should go to City and Neighborhood Services. Oh, I -- I think it should be a joint hearing. Thank you, Councilor Ross. Doc at 0921.
Doc at 0921, Councilor Murphy and Lamatina offered the following order regarding designation and placement of permanent POW/MIA Chair of Honor in City Council.
I wanted to ask if we could jointly assign, I'd ask for reconsideration to jointly assign 0919 to education and economic development?
Move to -- so move to.
Reconsider.
And to assign to education and economic development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
The chair recognizes President Murphy.
Vice President, I've been petitioned by some members of the group that honors POWs and MIA's and asked if the City Council would designate a special chair and a special committee to that practice. I don't believe we need that. I believe we can simply change the rules of the council, which would require nine votes to put special language in the Committee on Veterans, which is part of a standing committee to call out the issue of POW and MIA. So that would be my plan, to produce a new definition, if you will, of the Committee on Veteran Services, Labor Veteran Services, and put POW/MIA issues in that particular committee specifically. It's more of a housekeeping thing than anything. That is the request at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Madam Clerk. You're assigning the city neighbors? Doc number 0921 will be referred to City Naval Services and Veterans Affairs.
Doc at number 0922, Councilor Murphy for Councilor Jackson offered the following order.
Councilor Jackson moves suspension of the rules and passage of Doc at 0922. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. Doc at 0922 has passed.
Doc at number 0923, Councilor Murphy for Councilor Consavo offered the following order.
Councilor Consavo moves suspension of the rules and passage of Doc at 0923. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. Doc at 0923 has passed.
Doc at number 0924, Councilor Murphy for Councilor Limahan offered the following order.
Councilor Limahan moves suspension of the rules and pass it. Doc at 0924, all those in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. Doc at 0924 has passed.
Doc at number 0925, Councilor Murphy for Councilor Presley offered the following order.
Councilor Ross moves suspension of the rules and passage of Doc at 0925. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. Doc at 0925 has passed.
Doc at number 0926, Councilor Murphy for Councilor Presley offered the following order.
Councilor Ross moves suspension of the rules and passage of Doc at 0926. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. Doc at 0926 has passed.
Doc at number 0927, Councilor Murphy for Councilor Ross.
Councilor Ross moves suspension of the rules and passage of Doc at 0927. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. Doc at 0927 has passed.
Doc at number 0928, Councilor Murphy for Councilor Ross.
Councilor Ross moves suspension of the rules and passages of Doc at 0928. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. Doc at 0928 has passed. The clerk informs me there are three late-file matters in her hands, which in -- The clerk informs me there are three late-file matters in her hands, which in absence of objection will be added to today's agenda. Hearing no objection, the matters are so added, the clerk will read the first addition to today's agenda.
Order of Counsel Moxiomo, order that the council will continue to hold hearings on the FY14 Recommended Budget filed in City Council on June 5, 2013.
Chair recognizes Counsel Moxiomo.
I hope I confused you enough today.
I confused you.
To confuse you a little further, because we rejected the operational budget of the School Department in the city of Boston, we have to issue new docket numbers in order to continue to hold hearings. So I ask that you approve this measure.
Counsel Siomo moves passage of the first late-file matter. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. First late-file matter has passed. Clerk will read the second late-file matter. First and last.
Offered by Boston City Council, Charles Yancey, order for hearing regarding Boston cable television rates. Whereas cable television first became available in the United States in 1948, with subscription services beginning in the following year in 1949, whereas ordered that the appropriate committee on the Boston City Council holds public hearings to investigate current cable TV rates in the city of Boston, and be it further ordered that the representatives of the Massachusetts Department of Cable Television Division, the MIA's Office of Cable Communication, Comcast, RCN, and members of the public shall be invited to attend.
Chair recognizes Counsel Charles Yancey on the second late-file matter.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know this is fairly self-evident. It seems every two or three years, we have hearings on cable rates in the city of Boston because they are so outrageously high, hitting particularly hard those on fixed income and our senior citizens. So I believe that we should take another look at where those rates are today and what, if any, steps we can take to lighten the burden on many of families, particularly those that may be low-income or fixed income. The contract, of course, is negotiated with the administration and the cable company, but I believe by shining a light on this issue, we may be able to have some impact on how the residents of Boston are treated with these outrageous, outrageously high cable rates. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Yancey. The matter shall be referred to Committee on City and Neighborhood Services. Chair recognizes Counsel Bill Linehan.
Just add my name, please.
Please add the name of Counsel Bill Linehan. Matter will be referred to Committee on City and Neighborhood Services. Madam Clerk, please read the third late-file matter.
Letter from City Council Michael Ross, dated June 5, 2013, to the city clerk regarding Edward J. Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program, known as JAG. Dear Clerk Feeny, please find attached thereto a letter from the Boston Police Department regarding notification and certain requirements with respect to the application and awarding of the above-mentioned grant. The Boston Police Department will receive $484,229 of the FY13 Edward J. Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Local Law Enforcement Formula Grant Program, known as JAG, from the U.S. Department of Justice. As you will note, as a prerequisite to the application process, the Boston Police Department must provide a copy of the proposed spending plan to the local body of government. As such, please find a copy of the same. It is important to note that once the JAG grant is awarded, councils will have an additional opportunity to review and discuss the spending plan as the requisite accept-and-expend hearing, which will be held by the Committee on Public Safety. Thank you for your attention in this matter. Best regards, Michael P. Ross, Chair of the Committee on Public Safety.
Chair recognizes Counsel Mike Ross.
Thank you, Mr. President. I apologize to my colleagues for the late file. This is a prerequisite for the Byrne Grant. Anytime we receive it, there needs to be a 30-day notice that prior to the accept, the application and then accept and expend, we need to publicly notice what is being, what will be applied for. My colleagues have on their desk a copy of what it is, and of course, there'll be a hearing when we receive the application. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Ross, for the notification. Chair recognizes Counsel Tito Jackson. At what purpose, for what purposes is he?
Individual, but there's a bright and shining face that we won't be seeing anymore.
Do you wish to speak on the matter?
I'm sorry about that. Yes, I do.
Chair recognizes Counsel Jackson for unanimous consent to make a statement.
Mr. President, we lost a city employee. We lost just an amazing individual, Lisa Rawls, who many of you see in the elevator. She has a bright, shining face. She has a short haircut that is often better quaffed than mine, and she just is a great person, a great servant. She worked in Brooke Woodson's office, and she passed away this past weekend. And I just wanted to acknowledge not only her work, but there are certain people who have a presence to them that brighten up a room or elevator or wherever that they are. And I just wanted to acknowledge her on the floor. I appreciate Counsel Yancey memorializing her in a technical and proper way, but I just wanted to editorialize, because we have lost a great public servant, servant in Lisa Rawls. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Jackson. Anybody wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets may do so at this time. Seeing and hearing no takers. There are four late-file matters which are to be added to today's consent agenda. The chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Consent agenda has been adopted. And I'd ask all counselors and all guests to please rise as the council prepares to adjourn this week, the week of Wednesday, June 5. The council will be adjourning in memory of the following individuals. For all members of the Boston City Council, Lisa Rawls, who rode back on the bus with us from Counsel Bowling's funeral just a few months ago. Lisa worked for Counsel Brooke Woodson and was an obsequious presence in the building. She was well-known by all of us and a friend to all of us on the council. For Counsel O'Malley, the former Chief of Staff, Chief, what was Sargent at Arms of the Legislature, Charles M. McGowan. For counselors Linehan, Baker, and the chair, Pat McDonough of Pat's Pizza in Dorchester and South Boston, who passed away over the weekend. For Counselor Connolly, Tonya Wright. For counselors O'Malley, Connolly, and Consalvo, Mary E. Bernazani. For counselors Connolly and Yancey, Patrick R. Goddard. Counsel Presley, Yancey, and Connolly, Brianna Bigby. And for Counsel Yancey, Cephus Lewis Osborne. We can have a moment of silence for all of those folks forementioned. The chair moves that when the council adjourns, it will do so in memory of the aforementioned individuals, and is scheduled to be again next Wednesday, June 12, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye. Counsel stands adjourned.